It's time to get the Scott County School Board's main order.
At this time, we did our presentation for the Students of the Month as well as the Volunteers of the Month. This month, we're actually having two, we're having to catch up from last month. We have both our September and our October students. Their gift bags and Dr. Terry Keaton is instrumental in getting these ready for them. And I guess we'll probably just go in time order. Our September Student of the Month is Mr. Noah Ross Flady. Seventeen-year-old son of Adam and Becky Flady of the Huntsville community was selected by the Scott High School staff as the September Stand Student of the Month. Noah is a member of Flada, French, SWAT, and environmental clubs and is a member of the First Baptist Church of Oneida. Noah will be a member of the graduating class of 2018 and will graduate under the Tennessee Scholars Program. Noah has a love for music and wants to earn a degree from Carson Newman in Vocal Music Education. Noah has a GPA of 3.6170 and in his free time, he enjoys playing the piano and singing and being a member of the Highlander Cross Country Team, track and field. That's Noah Flady. Our October Student of the Month is Caitlin Renee Hamby. She is the seventeen-year-old daughter of Alan and Donna Hamby of the Helenwood Community and she was selected by the Scott High School staff as the October Stand Student of the Month. Caitlin is a member of the Flada Club and Scott High School's Blue Grass Band. Caitlin expresses her love for music by singing with the family, the Singing Hambys. Caitlin is a fourth-generation member of this wonderful group. Caitlin has a GPA of 3.8750 and she will be a member of the Highlander graduating class of 2018. Her dream is to work in the medical field as an X-ray technician. And our Volunteers of the Month. Our crowd looks a little thin tonight, but we appreciate our volunteers and what they do for our schools. Some of them, you know, need to find somebody to do something for you, find the person that's the busiest. And it may well be that these people are just too busy to come here. But from Birchfield, we would like to recognize Christie Blevins. And from Fairview, Aaron Carson. From Huntsville Elementary, Monica Terry. Huntsville Middle, Gabe and Elizabeth Reese. From Robbins, Susan Ritchie. And from Winfield, Tiffany Lewis. Get out of pictures. And Madam Chairman, that concludes the presentations.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board? If not, we'll go to the principals. Ms. Stanley, we let you go first.
We were just taking bets on if we'd have to go first. Okay, we have flu shots set for the Winfield students on November the 3rd and that is a postponement. They were supposed to be tomorrow, so just so those parents know, they've been postponed until November the 3rd. And I'm sure I speak for all of us when I say a reminder about parent-teacher conferences being Monday, October 23rd from 4 until 7:00. We encourage all the parents to come out and meet the teachers. We will be giving out grade cards that night to the parents. Any parent who isn't there will be giving those out the next day to the students. Also, next week is Red Ribbon Week, so we hope that all of the students will participate in that. We have on the website the colors or what each, what the students are to wear for each day. And appreciate Mr. Gina for coordinating that for us. Next week, we start basketball. Our first game will be next Thursday night. It is home and we will play Elk Valley at 6:00. That game will begin at 6 o'clock. Family Reading Night will be Monday, October 30th from 4 to 6:00. Our costume walk will be Tuesday afternoon, October 31st at 1:00. And just to go ahead and mention for next month, we will be having our Veterans Day program on Thursday, November 9th. And we always have a really, really good turnout for that. We'll start with breakfast at 8:15. We encourage all of our veterans and the board members who would like to come, you're certainly welcome to come and eat with us, starting at 8:15. And also, just want to comment that today in the cafeteria, she didn't know I was going to say this, but we did have barbecue chicken and green beans and mashed potatoes and rolls and fruit and it was a fantastic meal. I just want to, Ms. Terry and all of our cafeteria ladies to know that I thoroughly enjoyed that. So appreciate that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tanya.
Thank you. Like Ms. Stanley said, we do have parent-teacher conferences on Monday, but unlike Winfield School, our Red Ribbon Week, and that's very hard to say, is going to be the week of the 30th. Parents, if you'll look on the website, you'll see what each day is going to be. We'll be sending letters home for that as well. Want to congratulate our football team this year. They had an undefeated season. They're going to be playing in the state region, for our region anyway, at Campbell County High School on Saturday, October 28th. I do not know who they're playing yet. They play at noon. We'll find out tonight. Whoever wins the game between Jellico and Caulfield will be who we will be playing. So hopefully, everybody will be able to come out on that Saturday and support us there at Campbell County High School. Other than that, there's just a lot of stuff going on. We'll mention November stuff at our work session, but I don't have anything else unless you have anything, Stanley.
Thank you. Ms. Newman.
Thank you. I do want to mention that the retired teachers will be at Robbins Elementary School tomorrow and we look forward to having them. On the 26th of October, coming to us, they'll be at school. That'll be the last time for this semester. They won't start back again until March. On the 27th of October, our 7th and 8th graders are teaming up with Mr. Cash and some of the Fairview students to visit LMU for a day of science, fun and learning. So we're looking forward to that. I think that'll be a really good day for those kids to get some hands-on science learning at LMU campus and we appreciate them hosting that for us. And I do want to just say how proud I am of our football team. We ended our season Tuesday night against Birchfield and we want to wish them the best of life. And I'm really proud of our boys and our coaches. So that's all I have unless you have questions for me. Thank you.
Good.
I feel like I don't want to do a lot of repeating of what they've already said. The 5th grade did go for soil conservation and I have some papers from Ms. Flady for you and I'll give them to you right at the end. Red Ribbon Week does begin October the 23rd and Officer Sexton will be at our school on Monday to kick that off. Also, on the same day, on the 23rd, that is our parent-teacher conference. So parents out there, it starts at 4:00 and we will be there till 7:00. The lead conference this week was very informative. We always come back with lots of information, so it was very good. We want to wish Huntsville Bears good luck tonight. They are in Kingston playing against Cherokee Middle, so we hope that they have a safe trip there, a safe trip back. But everybody doesn't come back banged up and hurt and things like that, so wish them good luck. That's it, unless you have anything for me.
Thank you. Mr. Cash.
I'd like to do a few things. Tomorrow night will be our offensive carnival from 6:00 to 8:30. I'd like to buy everybody out for that. We'll be having haunted house, hayrides, a lot of games. Last year, we took, had balls and raised money and the teacher with the most money kissed a pig. And I had to kiss a pig. It actually wasn't that bad. I checked on the pig and we thought about the person I had the pig was getting in the water and wanted to get rid of it and we thought about eating the pig this year. But we ended up wanting to teach, we're taking out the balls and we got balls and the teachers, or I'll be two or three out, I don't know where we are, but I'm a tricycle race in the gym at 8:30. Counting the money's at noon and Mr. Shill Cox is leaving. I told the kids my back and knees weren't very good. But all seriousness, it's going to be a good event and I'd like to buy everybody out. That's the 4th night, it's 8:30. Monday, parent-teacher conference from 4 to 7:00. As the others have said, great cards will be handed out then. Anybody not showing up Monday, we'll get the kids, we'll get their great cards on Tuesday. Our first basketball game is Monday, October 30th. That's at Fairview. And then our Veterans Day program is going to be November the 2nd. It's going to be a little earlier than some, but we've got some guests coming in, that's the only day they could do. So November the 2nd is going to be our Veterans Day program. We'd like to buy everybody out for that. That's all I have. If you have any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Lisa.
I don't have anything for the board or anything tonight, but I do have, we are having our flu shots. All the adults, faculty and staff are having those tomorrow. Student flu shots, we need all that paperwork in, so please get that in as soon as possible so that we can get enough flu shots to go around for germs and flu mess. Also, parent-teacher conferences, Red Ribbon Week. All of us, 23rd is the kickoff, so make sure that, you know, you look for the notes that went home. Anybody's welcome to come out and enjoy that with us. I think we are having some drug dogs and things coming out on the 24th to do a presentation. Ms. Gina has set that up, so they're coming out to talk to the kids about not doing drugs and staying away from that. And that's going through in our playground if everybody wants to come out. On October 25th, we have our birthday celebration, so we'll be celebrating October birthdays. On the 27th, we have our fall retake pictures. We'll be doing our class pictures. I want to invite board members and central office staff, if you want to come out and do a picture, please do so. Come over and we'll take you a professional picture. It'll look awesome for you. And on the 30th, it kicks off our book fair. And that'll run through November 2nd, so I don't have anything else unless you have questions for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Redd.
Thank you. I do want to give everybody an update on Robbie Massey, our teaching assistant, who was injured just a little bit back. He did successfully complete, they did discharge him from the hospital and he was at the rehab center at Patricia Neal, but they have moved him to the Shepherd Center, which is a rehab center that specializes specifically in spinal injuries. And so he made it down there yesterday, had a good trip down there. He was down there today to start that initial evaluation, so please remember to keep him and his family in your thoughts and your prayers as he continues to go through that rehab process. I know that he's anxious about that and we are too. We're anxious to get him back and get him in the hallways. I know the students are missing him, so just again, continue to keep that family in your thoughts and prayers as they go through this time. We do want to offer congratulations to our Lady Highlander soccer team. They were district champs this year and so we're very excited about that. It has been a while since we've had a district championship of any kind at Scott High, so we were really, really excited for those girls. They did play in a region game on Tuesday. They did fall 2 to 1 in that game, so their season has ended, but ended wonderfully and we're very, very proud of that team, those coaches and everybody that helps out with that, with the team there. We appreciate that. Thank you. And also, we had our college and career fair right before fall break and I do want to thank Ms. Kim Hamek and our guidance department for putting that on each year and for all of those businesses and colleges that come out that day. It's a long day and there's a lot of things going on and they rotate through and if you come by, it seems a little chaotic, but there's always a method there and the students get an opportunity to be exposed to lots of different opportunities at one time. For a lot of our students, they only know what's available maybe here in the county and so to be able to bring in some of those other resources is really neat. And that went off wonderfully right before fall break, so I want to thank them for those organizational efforts. At the high school, excuse me, we will have parent-teacher conferences on Tuesday, October the 24th. Hours will be from 3:30 until 6:30 at the high school. We do encourage all parents and students to attend. We will give out grade cards that night. Again, if you're unable, if they're unable to attend, we'll give them out on Wednesday morning for those that weren't picked up. But we do want to encourage all students and parents to come out and have conversations with their teachers that night. Wednesday, that's going to be a busy week for us. Tuesday, we have parent-teacher conferences. Wednesday, the 25th, we have our first senior financial aid meeting that will be during the school day at 1:30 and that meeting will be geared specifically to students. However, piggybacking off of that, that night at 4:30 will be a FAFSA parent night at the Technology Center where parents will be able to come and bring their personal information and be able to work with a FAFSA expert. It's not anybody from our school, it's somebody that comes in from the state and they will be able to sit down with them and help them to go through that process and fill out that FAFSA form. If that's something as a parent that you've never done, it can be very confusing and very challenging, so we encourage you to take advantage of that. We will have at least one more of those probably closer to January, but we encourage parents to take advantage of that. Again, that process can be very confusing and it is an absolute necessary process if your child is even thinking about going to college. They need to go out that FAFSA form, so we encourage parents to take advantage of that. On Thursday, the 26th, at 11:00 a.m., seniors will have their first Tennessee Promise meeting. Again, that will be during the school day. That is the first of two required meetings that they must attend in order to be eligible for that Tennessee Promise money. It's free money, it goes to all students regardless of GPA. The only thing they require them to do is attend those two meetings. This is the one in the fall, there will be one in the spring, usually the one in the spring is in the evening time. So again, just want to encourage seniors and senior parents to make sure those students are in attendance on October the 26th, so they'll be there for that meeting. And then on Friday, the 27th, we will be having a medic blood drive at Scott High. If you'd like to donate blood, we encourage anybody to come out. We, of course, students who are 17 years old can donate. If they are 16, used to 16-year-olds could donate. Now 16-year-olds can only donate with a parent's signature. So we'll have some 16-year-olds, but mostly it's 17 and 18-year-old students that will donate, but adults donate that day as well. There is the opportunity right now, medic did send word to us that at the student or at the donator's request, they can request for their blood to be donated as part of the replacement drive for the Las Vegas incident. So that's something that we've tried to rally students around, so we look forward to being able to contribute to that. And that's all that I have unless you have any questions. Thank you so much.
All right, well, I'm, you can see sitting in for Mr. Bill Hall. I received his permission to tell you where he is at. He, his son Billy had to have surgery today and he and his family went down for that. He tells me that the surgery went well and that Billy's doing well, so we appreciate your prayers on their behalf and that you continue to remember him in his recovery. He did leave me a director's report, many of the things you've already heard. The first thing on his report is congratulations to the Lady Highlander soccer team, first ever district championship. And that's really something. That's a lot to be proud of and I would hardly echo that. Parent-teacher conferences, as you've already heard, are Monday, October the 23rd for the elementary and middle schools. They go from 4 to 7:00. Scott High School will be Tuesday, October the 24th from 3:30 to 6:00. The other, one of the other items that he mentioned was the Tennessee Middle School Athletic Association Football Playoffs. Birchfield will be playing Campbell County High School for the Class 1A Regional Championship. And I heard Ms. Tanya right, that's October 28th and it'll be the winner of Jellico and Caulfield. Huntsville Middle School is playing tonight. Byverdive is Cherokee Middle School, it's in Kingston, and that will be for the right play in the Class 3A Regional Championship to be held at Campbell County High School. And he wants to congratulate all the coaches and players for an outstanding football season. The last item he has is update on the bus garage and that is proceeding at pace. We've had the asbestos abatement concluded and I have paperwork, proper paperwork filed and it's in there in the asbestos drawer that has all of our asbestos reports that we have to keep and so that's all been taken care of. I have been emailing contact with the First Place Finish, who's the contractor's going to be doing the demolition and removal of the bus garage. I don't have a date that I've received, but Mr. Harry Gilman, our asbestos contractor, thought that might start as early as the 30th of October. So that's, that's all I have on the bus garage. We do have most of the stuff out. We're still going to have to do some research on the records that were housed out there and have to find a way to probably preserve a great majority of those, but that's, that's all I have right now unless you have questions. I might not be able to answer them, but I might.
Thank you. Okay, item 7, adoption of agenda. In accordance with Board Policy Number 1.403, the Scott County Board of Education should adopt an agenda of all items to be active on during the regular monthly meeting of October the 19th, 2017. May I have a motion to approve the October 19th, 2017 agenda?
Make the motion. Second.
Any discussion? Waiting on the roll call.
Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Mr. Stanley.
Aye.
Mr. Shill Cox.
Aye.
Ms. Sharp.
Aye.
Ms. Kidd.
Aye.
Ms. Abbott.
Okay, item 8, consent agenda items. In accordance with the Scott County Board of Education Policy Number 4.403, the Board of Education may include routine and non-controversial items on a consent agenda, which may be adopted by a simple vote without discussion. Any item on the consent agenda may be removed and placed on the regular agenda for further consideration at the request of any board member. Excuse me. May I have a motion to approve the items listed on the consent agenda as follows? A, approval of amendments for September 14th, 2017. B, approval of financial report and bills for July and August of 2017.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Waiting on the roll call.
Mr. Stanley.
Aye.
Ms. Kidd.
Aye.
Mr. Shill Cox.
Aye.
Ms. Sharp.
Aye.
Ms. Abbott.
Aye.
And Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Item 9A, approved budget amendments. In pursuit to Board Policy Number 2.201, the Scott County Board of Education needs to approve budget amendments required to balance the budget for the fiscal year 2017, 2018. This action will allow funds to be applied to areas of the budget that lack sufficient funds to complete the school year. May I have a motion to approve the following amendments? General Purpose Amendment Number 2, Federal Amendment Number 1, Special Education IDEA Part B Budget Carryover Amendment, and Special Education IDEA Preschool Budget Carryover Amendment.
I'll make that motion.
Can I hear a second?
Yeah.
Mr. Shill Cox.
Any discussion? Waiting on the roll call.
Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Mr. Shill Cox.
Aye.
Ms. Sharp.
Aye.
Ms. Kidd.
Aye.
Ms. Abbott.
Aye.
Mr. Stanley.
Aye.
Item 9B, bereavement leave. Bereavement leaves for support staff. May I have a motion to approve the following? Bereavement leave for support staff. The Scott County Board of Education shall provide three consecutive days of bereavement leave in the event of the death of a family member. For the purpose of this benefit, a family member shall be defined as a spouse, parent, step-parent, parent-in-law, child, stepchild, sibling, grandchild, or grandparent. Employees shall receive regular scheduled pay, the Board should provide a substitute teacher or act. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Waiting on the roll call.
He goes down second. I heard two. Shill Cox did it.
Shill Cox, I think, first.
Okay, Ms. Sharp.
Aye.
Mr. Shill Cox. Ms. Kidd.
Aye.
Mr. Stanley.
Aye.
Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Ms. Abbott.
Item 9C, Imagination Library. In order to continue our sponsorship of the Imagination Library, the Scott County Board of Education must approve payment of the $2,000 annual fee. May I have a motion to continue our sponsorship of the Imagination Library and pay the $2,000 annual fee? I make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? I might add, I saw Miss Gloria on TV, Dolly Parton, and she said she started this Imagination Library in her county, which is Sevier County, and then it went to the state of Tennessee and now it's nationwide. It's awesome program, so I'm glad we're supporting it. Okay, waiting on the roll call.
All right. Ms. Kidd.
Aye.
Mr. Stanley.
Aye.
Mr. Shill Cox.
Aye.
Ms. Sharp.
Aye.
Ms. Abbott.
Aye.
Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Item 9D, renovation of cafeterias. Howlett King, the Food Service Director, has an analysis and evaluation completed in March 2014 of the Birchfield and Robbins Field Cafeteria for designs due review of architectural drawings, photographs, and field measurements. Ms. King would like permission to complete the cafeteria design at the Birchfield and Robbins Cafeteria. May I have a motion to allow the Food Service Director to complete the architectural design recommended by Palmer Hamilton LLC Innovative Cafeteria Solutions at the Birchfield and Robbins Elementary School Cafeteria?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion?
Is this our last two?
This is our last two.
All right.
They will all be completed.
You've done a good job.
And we're solics.
And we're so excited.
Okay, is there any discussion? Waiting on the roll call.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Phil Cox?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Kidd?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Item 9E, board policies. Approval is needed by the Board to amend board policies as recommended by TSBA. May I have a motion to approve the first reading of the following amended board policies as recommended by TSBA? 6.4081, same relocation of students, 6.500, special education students, and 6.503 homeless students. I'll make that motion. Second. Any discussion? Waiting on the roll call.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Kidd?
Aye.
Mr. Phil Cox?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Item 9F, TSBA policy maintenance agreement. The Board needs to approve the payment of the TSBA District Annual Policy Manual Updating and Online Service Agreement. May I have a motion to approve the payment of the TSBA District Annual Policy Manual Updating and Online Service Agreement in the amount of $2,500.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Any discussion? Waiting on the roll call.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Phil Cox?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Kidd?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Item 9G, overnight out-of-state trips. Board approval is needed for out-of-state overnight school trips. May I have a motion to approve the following overnight out-of-state trips? Scott High School, Baytown Club State Convention, Nashville, Tennessee, November 16th through the 18th of 2017.
Make that motion.
Second.
Nobody want to play with me.
Any discussion? Waiting on the roll call.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Kidd?
Aye.
Mr. Phil Cox?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Item 9H, approved committee. Approval is needed to appoint the textbook committees. May I have a motion to approve the following textbook committees for the 2017-2018 school year? Science, Birchfield Elementary, K-5, Michelle Golden. 6-8, Dan Terry. Fairview Elementary, K-5, Crystal Stanley. 6-8, Jared Sexton. Huntsville Elementary, K-4, Jake Miller. Huntsville Middle, 6-8, Debbie Cross. Robbins Elementary, K-5, Tracy Sexton. 6-8, Dana Story. Winfield Elementary, K-5, Sheila Kidd. 6-8, Darby Laxton. Scott High, 9-12, William Smith, Wendy Billingsley, Chuck Jeffers, Tanya Hemerton, and Brandy Rogers. Physical education, wellness, Birchfield Elementary, K-8, Shane Newport. Fairview Elementary, K-8, Brittany Young. Huntsville Elementary, K-4, Stephen Maris. Huntsville Middle, 6-8, Mark Prophet. Robbins Elementary, K-8, Johnny West. Winfield Elementary, K-8, Kim King. Scott High, 9-12, Vince Owens, Jordan Jeffers, and Tanner Williams. Fine arts, Fairview Elementary, K-8, David Snubgrass. Scott High, 9-12, Shawnee Cummings and Ryan Hoffman. Anatomy and physiology, Scott High, 9-12, Nita Chambers.
Before we vote, I do know a small correction that needs to be made. Huntsville Middle should actually say 5-8 instead of 6-8. We could correct that, and I suppose that should be included in the motion, Mr. Biden, to correct.
Yes.
So we could correct that to Huntsville Middle, 5-8.
Okay. Okay, any discussion?
We've had a motion, have we?
Oh, that's right. We've not, I'm sorry, not agreed to.
I make the motion that we accept this as an amendment to, or to change that to 5-8.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Second. Any more discussion?
Aye.
Ms. Kidd?
Aye.
Mr. Phil Cox?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
And Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Phil Cox, do you have anything?
We basically got to be there for Friday morning, but you pretty well are going to have to leave on Thursday, or sometime Thursday, unless you want to get up, because we start around 7:00 or 7:30, so it'd be easier for you to get in at least Thursday evening sometime.
I just want to thank Mr. Blackley for going in for Mr. Hall.
We're excited. I noticed in our camp, I thought the papers had made the first time in two decades, been 20 years, but this is a...
Yeah, the first for soccer ever.
First for soccer ever. That's a, I would tell you, that's a great accomplishment. Yes.
I think it's also worth taking note that we have with the FAFSA, that's a big deal. And you have to have that, not only for college, but a lot of people forget that our, I think only vocational schools, our area schools, but now they're the Tennessee Colleges of Applied Technology, so that's colleges well. So that's something that, that's a really great opportunity for our parents and our students.
And the money's free, all you have to do is go to the form. That's it. But the form is complicated, and it can be very intimidating, so that's why we want people to come out and get help with it.
It absolutely is. It takes a lot of work.
It does.
One thing I would like to mention on that is I still run into people, they're not getting the real grip about our Tennessee Promise. If you end up starting someplace else in college and then try to come back?
Yeah.
You're done. So, parents, you need to know that, you need to know what kind of decision you're making if you make it to go another college and think you're going to come back. That just won't work, and I run into people all the time.
And they've, and the state of Tennessee has looked at some of that, and that actually, some parts of that will be changing for not this class, but the next class coming up, because they've looked at that and realized there are a lot of difficult parts about things like that.
I think it needs to be changed.
Yeah.
You feel, you start someplace, you ain't going to come back. I don't think that's right.
Yeah.
And a lot of parents miss that somewhere along the way.
I would like to thank the principals and field grade teachers that came to Soil Conservation Day. That was an awesome day. We had over 300 field graders, and it was fun, and they enjoy, learn a lot there, too. And that's it. You want to ask for a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
Any more discussion?
All right, Mr. Phil Cox?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Kidd?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
And Mr. Thompson?